Everybody please rise. Mr. Swindell?
Gentlemen, in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here in your presence to discuss the very important business of Henry County. Please bless each and every one of us to use your wisdom to carry out your business as you see fit. Please bless us in the coming days with the impending storm and anyone that may be impacted. Please bless those that are protecting this great nation and the farmers that are feeding it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clerk, roll call please.
It's the regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, August 27, 2019 at 5:00 PM in the County Commission Chambers in La Belle, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Daryl Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Attorney Mark Lapp, and Clerk Barbara Batner.
Thank you ma'am. To start with, if you're here tonight and you do wish to speak, if you would, there's cards in the back. If you'd grab one and fill it out and then turn it in to the clerk, that way we'll have that when that portion comes up, we'll get to you. Thank you very much. Under number one, the bid's being, that's being deleted, pulled out?
Right, yeah, that's gonna be...
Postponed?
Postponed, for later action.
Why is that, Mr. Chair?
The ranking committee was not properly constituted for that. It was a ranking committee composed of four staff persons.
So it should've been...
And it should've been a mix of staff and non-staff. And so, staff is redoing that ranking.
You're gonna get the same bid?
Well, yeah, the bids are not being, you know, it's not being rebid. The bids are already in. The same three that came in are still the ones that will be considered. It's just gonna be a properly constituted ranking committee to rank them.
How could there be that much difference in that bid?
Dollars?
We should, so, Mr. Chair, did you look at that? Did you see the difference?
Yeah, it's huge.
And I had a couple, I had a couple of questions as it related to that. Because, Commissioner Harris, you brought up the fact that it's that big of a difference.
Yes.
And then I saw that Guardian, I'm just assuming they were woefully...
Yeah, my understanding, I'm not in the middle of that, but I've been told by staff that Guardian, like, submitted, their submission appears to only relate to housing...
Uh huh.
As opposed to additional services that would go with a disaster recovery project like this.
Uh huh.
So it's, their scope is much narrower than we really want or need. So that may explain why their, theirs is just kinda an outlier, you know, on what they came up with. But I don't know about the other two, why they're so varied.
Mm-hmm.
Shane?
Mr. Chair?
Margaret were there.
Yes, sir. Margaret and Shane were there. So Shane, I guess what I wanted to ask was, let's just say, let's just say in a, in a perfect world, we were awarded, well, so, so DEO is looking at 1.2, we don't know what that award would potentially be.
We don't know what the award would be.
Not even to us, but, I mean, not to Henry, but to the state, is a 1.2 number?
I don't know what the award would be. I know in their bid, when they gave their bid, they had like estimates, like if we received this much and then a percentage of it, and that's why there was a discrepancy.
And so, and so then what I was thinking was, Mr. Chair, was, what would it hurt if we gave staff the green light to say, okay, you're getting this money, and you had someone that was narrowed on a scope, I didn't even know that that was gonna be one of your replies, Mark, but you have someone that's just 100% locked and loaded on housing, and then someone has other aspects of it, I just think that they oughta, you know, it's, I don't wanna say it's free money, because I hate that phrase, but it doesn't hurt to queue up multiple consultants and get it all done, I guess is what I'm saying. It's money that we would not have otherwise, to look at that. So I just think that they oughta, they oughta look at having a 1 and 2, just like we did with our, just like we did with our disaster recovery contractors that were going to fix things. And, and you know, we obviously ran into a snafu with that, right? So let's just say, for discussion sakes, that, discussion sake, that a storm comes through and hits 40 counties, you know, hit 63 out of 67, I think is what Irma did, and now they're, they're over saturated, and we don't know what their business portfolio is, what's gonna happen once again is, we're gonna be the back burner, because we have $12, and Miami-Dade has 12 million, or 1,200 million dollars. And so I just think that, that we oughta, we oughta, I don't know if that's in part of their portfolio or what they presented, but it's just something to think about, that's all. So I look forward to when they bring that back to us.
Good discussion, thank you. Just gonna move us to the consent.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent. I'd like to pull B1 and C2.
Okay, also we're taking, we're pulling 2?
A2.
Under consent?
A2.
And also, it's requested to pull C3?
Bring it back.
You say A2?
Gonna bring it back? Yes, sir, A2.
There are no minutes, that was just a mistake that it was listed.
Commissioner Turner, which one was it, sir?
I'm sorry, boss, B1?
B1, I got it.
And C2.
And C2. Okay, we gonna pull those for discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the C3 is requested to pull to a later date. So those, those are all we have right now. Can I get a motion to approve the final remaining consent?
Motion.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Turner made it and...
I didn't hear you.
Oh, Mr. Turner made the motion, or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Byrd, then, for the approval of the final minutes. Any more discussion?
The consent.
Not the final, the minutes were polled, but...
That's right, we're gonna discuss those in just a minute.
But they're not even, they're not even, it's...
Talking about the consent.
I know.
It was just, calm down, everybody, we're on the consent agenda. That's all we're doing, is approving the rest of the consent agenda. Everyone take a breath and relax.
Relax.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So now we're going to discuss, starting with B1.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd just like to point out that people very rarely have to tell me to relax, I'm a very laid-back kinda guy.
Calm down.
Yes, sir.
Oh, boy.
And so, B1 was the contract with Campo and for the preliminary, and so Shane, you, you're gonna be able to address all of those different curves throughout 835 and 846? Is that what, 1 on 846 and everything on 835?
Yes, sir. That's what DOT provided funding for, safety, curb safety improvements.
Shane, is it possible that we could get this map and, and a brief synopsis of what this is put to the county Facebook page?
Of that map right there?
Yes, sir. And the county, and that, that contract out, because it is, it is shocking to me how many of my constituents travel that road daily to either get to or go, or come home from work, and the long and short of it is, is they have a lot of questions about it, and I'd like to put that document out there so they can see it. And, and if, and if they're frustrated with the timeline, then I want them to hammer on us, and we'll all get in the boat together and row towards District 1 office and FDOT. But I'm, I'm happy with this document that you've showed us, and, and I think that it'll lead to a handful of other questions as it relates to when we're getting into design versus when we're actually relaying pavement and so on and so forth.
Okay, I'll work with Emily.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item B1, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commissioner, you also pulled C2, sir?
Yes, sir. The disposition of the surplus vehicle to La Belle Downtown revitalization, I don't know if there's anyone here representing LGRC right now, but I'd, I'd like for us to not only give that to them, but I'd really like for us to, to have a proactive conversation with either taking tourism development dollars, or, I don't wanna touch any of Shane's budget, but I just think that we don't need to make that organization go out of pocket to refurbish something that's gonna essentially be a gym that we want to have, you know, encouraging visits and come on, and so I just think that's something that we oughta look at, and I wanted to, to put that out there for discussion.
I don't think they are.
They're not gonna take it?
No, they're gonna take it, but I don't think they're gonna do anything out of pocket.
Okay, okay.
They wanna, they wanna refurbished?
Yes. And I think they have some may in mind.
Okay, good, good, okay. Well, I just, I...
Keep the...
Okay, that would be great. That's it. So I make a motion to approve item C2.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commissioner, Attorney Lapp?
Yes.
Have an ordinance extending here?
C3.
They were being, they were pulled and deleted, they were pulled for...
Not, not to be addressed.
Not to be addressed now.
Move to the next meeting. Oh, yes, this first item for you is extending the local vendor preference in your procurement ordinance, this is to extend it for another two years.
Attorney, well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the local vendor preference and essentially enact item, option number one.
Second the motion?
Okay, motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on that?
Public hearing.
Getting there.
Sounds like you're getting to the end.
Did you have too much coffee today?
Just don't wanna, and I vote...
No more Starbucks for you, sir.
You ready to go?
This is a hearing of the public, if any one of the public would like to address this, we'd, I'd love to have you come up at this time. Seeing none, any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir, continue.
Next one is sales tax ordinance to extend the allowance to spend the money on non-capital purposes.
Mr. Chair, I'd also make a motion to approve option one, to approve the attached ordinance associated with allowance of the sales tax to use proceeds for any public purpose. My only question I would have, Mr. Chair, is, do we know what that, do we know what that account is up to now, with reference to how much it generates per year?
One time it was...
Almost...
About $2 million or four.
Yeah.
The ordinance says 3.3 million is the minimum it's supposed to have, but then it got depleted and then...
Each year, though, it's going up.
We remember at one point that we were right out of...
It went down to zero, and then it'd gotten somewhat up through some payments from FEMA. I don't know where we're at with that, something like that, but I don't think we're at 3.3.
Okay. Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Byrd, this is also a hearing of the public. Does any one of the public would like to address this? Seeing none, any further discussion on the board?
Mr. Chair, if they could just, if they could just give us a report associated with that account, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I believe we can get that taken care of. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ms. Simbels?
Good evening, Commissioners. This next agenda item is a petition to rezone 238.4 acres from A2 agriculture to heavy industrial, which is I2. This is the BHT property that you recently approved a comprehensive plan amendment for this same property. It's located on 835, as you can see.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to, to approve option number one and allow for the rezoning from, to industrial.
Second the motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. This is also a hearing of the public. Does any one of the public here would like to speak to this?
Simbels, oh, Mr. Chair, Ms. Simbels, did y'all have anybody at LPA to speak?
No, sir.
Pro or con? Good, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, yes, this next agenda item is a petition for a special...
Make a motion that we adopt B?
B? Oh.
For the zoning, rezoning.
Second. Here we got a motion by Commissioner Byrd, second by Commissioner Harris. This is also a hearing of the public. Is there anyone here would like to address that tonight? Seeing none, any further discussion on the board?
Nope, glad to see it. Another rushing family, it's a good family, long-term teachers and healthcare, glad to see them open up a business.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Great.
Yes, ma'am, keep going.
Okay, the next agenda item is rezoning. It's a, actually a PUD, Plan Unit Development Amendment. This is for Circle C Farms. The subject property was approved for a PUD for mining in 2010, and the current owners would like to expand the uses there to allow the existing slaughterhouse. This was a, this is the subject of a code case, however, by going through the PUD amendment and then the site development plan approval, will bring this property into compliance. And staff is, I'm sorry, let me back up. We did present this to the LPA, they, we had discussions about the access road, however, at the Felda Community Association meeting, based on the input from the adjacent property owners, they didn't feel like we had to add a condition for the maintenance of the access easement that comes off of Morris Taylor, and that, that the property owners do sufficiently maintain it. It was an issue that was brought up by an adjacent property owner, and again, the other property owners were, that were adjacent to it, were, were not, did not feel like it was a true issue. So we didn't recommend an additional condition.
I may have to approve.
Second, discussion?
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Ops. Turner?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, this is your district, correct?
Yes, sir, it is. I was present at the meetings they had. The one gentleman did have the concern about the road, but after being explained, actually the, the folks that are doing this deal actually own the property, and they maintain the road. Everyone there was completely good with it, so there's no issue. It used to be, it was originally for mining, it was the mem's property, so everything went forth with no problems, yes, sir.
Okay, I just...
He thought it was a public road.
He thought it was, well, he knew it wasn't, he thought, he knew it was a private road, but he didn't actually realize that they actually owned the road.
Okay.
So...
Good to go, thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing as well, anyone like to speak to this?
This will be the final adoption for this one?
This is, yes.
This is the final.
Seeing none, any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, this next agenda item is, basically I'm requesting a continuance, staff is, for, for the September 24th, 2019 board meeting. This is a final plat for the Liberty Shores Mini Home Community.
So moves.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. We're looking for a continuance. Does anyone in the public wanna speak to this?
To be clear for the record, it'd be September 24th here in these chambers that the public hearing would occur at 5:00 PM.
Yes, sir, thank you for clarifying that.
Let me ask, just a quick question, Mr. Chair. Ms. Simbels, would it, would it be possible, and if you've, and if you have notified us of this, then by all means, I apologize, but just anything, like, like, let me go back to the item that was on County Road 835. Did you send out any kind of, just a, an overview, not necessarily other than the agenda, but just a synopsis to all of the board, saying, hey, these are coming on board? Do we do anything like that?
Well, I, I haven't.
And I'm not talking about a major document, I'm talking about like, if you have, you know, like, so the LPA heard it how many days ago, Ms. Simbels?
It was la, uh...
Two Wednesdays ago? Or one Wednesday ago?
Yeah.
For the plat, you're talking about?
Yeah.
The preliminary plat would've gone on a long time ago.
Oh, no, the preliminary plat, but the...
The other three were August 14th.
Yes, August 14th.
August 14th, today's the 23rd. I don't know, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, like, when I, when I got the board book last week, I looked at that, I immediately looked at the address, and I was like, okay, kinda, you know, did a little quick Google search, familiarized myself with it, and I was just thinking, it might be beneficial for all the commission to just see it. I'm not trying to get a tremendous amount, just a, I mean, literally just a, you know, a three paragraph, you know, or I mean, a three sentence paragraph of, this is what's occurring, and then a denot, a denotation saying, District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and these are what, these are where they are, so that we can put it in our minds' eye, so to speak.
What I can do, that, that would be easy, would be for us to provide you a copy of our project list that we have.
All right.
And we can make it so that it describes what the name, what the project is, and, and where it is in the process.
Awesome.
I mean, this is before the public, even before the public hearings being scheduled.
That would be great, Ms. Simbels.
But, and, and we can, we can organize it by district.
And then if you, and then if you put something on there that showed, if you put something on there that showed just a chronological timeframe, you know, of, of when you're anticipating it'll go before the LPA and when it'll go before us, you know, if you have that, if not, I understand it.
Right.
Shane has that, that Public Works...
Yes.
Document, and I can't get over how much I reference that, and how much I share that with people.
Okay.
To give them an idea of what we're, what we're actually working on as a county, and I think people appreciate that.
Right, we do have that, we just need to shine it up a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can provide it in your books.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Simbels.
Did you have to call that tiny home?
That's what they called it, I didn't call it.
Can't you get them to change the name?
You don't like tiny?
Are you, are you, are you now discriminating against tiny homes as well?
What's wrong with tiny?
They're, they really are not tiny homes, they're just small homes. But you have to keep in mind that we allow 600 square foot homes in our land development code for almost every zoning district, so we allow tiny homes.
You could just say small.
Small homes?
Well, it's...
Micro.
It's, it's their marketing name, it's not our project name. Okay, but I'll...
But you dislike the word tiny? Okay.
I'll, I'll keep that in mind for future communications, to avoid that term.
You dislike little people too? I mean, we're probably detecting some pent-up frustrations about tiny and smaller people, man, I'm just worried about you a little bit.
We need to move forward. Anybody in the public wanna speak to this before we, any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Poor little old people?
Okay, correspondence action, nothing under FYI, just that everyone sees that, so it's taken as a staff reports.
Right, I'm taking those for, or the first one for Ms. Davis. The PRM Health Trust Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement, that's an interlocal agreement, so it requires board action, so we're presenting it for your approval along with the resolution authorizing Chairman to sign it.
Second.
And just as information, this is a two-year agreement by its nature, just so you know.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chair, is there anything that you would like to comment on before I dive into the legislative priorities? Is there anything you would like to say?
Is there something you wanted me to say?
I feel like there's something that you wanted to say.
Should I say go gators?
You should.
Yes, I like it, yeah.
For the record, that hurt.
Before I dive into... Before I dive into this for y'all to discuss, I did want to introduce Ms. Tori Renza, who is the new District Secretary for State Rep Byron Donalds, who is here this evening and has an office here at the courthouse, so I don't know if you all have had a chance to meet with her yet, but she's, from what I've known so far, she's a wonderful asset to Byron Donalds' office, and I'm happy to have her here. So you were emailed a draft of legislative priorities, this is just the initial for discussion, and you also have it before you now, and so this is for you all to...
All right.
Top-down?
I'm top-down, I like, I like the order. I wanted to know if there's been any, any update on the, going to the bottom on the Four Corners project? Have you talked, have we talked to any of the other county administrators and/or water management district staff? I mean, how familiar have we gotten? Do we think $4 million's gonna get it done? Or is that just the Henry County portion? Is this ultimately a $35 million ask? What are we looking at?
For the record, Shane Parker, the $4 million was the estimate we got from AIM, that includes CEI, it could be 4, 4.2 million, but it's moving, it's basically a dirt-moving project, so the prices could vary considerably.
Shane, you're telling me that for, for $4 million, you feel confident that an issue that's been open for over 35 years can be dealt with?
It's not gonna solve all of it, it's gonna solve a good portion of it. It's gonna provide additional storage and water quality.
Can, can I jump in, a quick question with that?
I hope you do.
So, in, in some of the discussions that I've been hearing lately, and how, how much of this is a Henry County issue?
Well...
Versus not?
It's a teeny tiny.
No, that section of Henry County, the Four Corners, does get flooded out. There are several, there's a large cow pasture owned by the Humphreys, there's a neighborhood called Scott and Wendy that the water backs up on the north side of them, and then the flow's coming out of Charlotte and out of Glades, they're going to the Jack's Branch, but some from Henry County, if it can't move...
How many homes and residents are affected?
That I don't know, off the top of my head.
On the Henry County side...
There's quite a few up down those two roads, rather.
Right.
So, in this...
Well, that's sheet flow, though, that's what we're getting.
And, and so there's a couple pieces of discussion that I think that I'm opening, and I don't have the answers to, but I think that it's worth bringing out and let's at least dig into this, because the whole time that I've been a commissioner, and several years before, this has been on there, and I think now that we almost go in, in the years that I've gone into the legislative offices, before we open our mouths, they go, hey, Four Corners, you know, and I think that they're almost numb to it, and I think...
I don't wanna ask it, I don't wanna ask for it, if Glades isn't making it in the top two or three?
Lee County?
Lee County's not doing the same, and sort it, because, to your point, to your point...
They have more to, to lose if they don't, you know, if we, if they don't move on it too, it's more down to them than it is us.
Well, I, I can't speak, I can't speak to the fact of whether it's gonna help anybody more than it helps us, I don't know. I know this, I follow your lead on a lot of things, Commissioner Harris, and I've heard you say that for a number of years, this has been an issue. A $4 million ask is a huge number for us, you know, that, I mean, that, that equates more than any single legislative appropriation we've ever received in my tenure since 2008.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you, if you can recall where we've gotten more than that in one given year. I can guarantee you this, Lee County gets that.
Yeah, every year.
You know, Palm Beach County gets that, and so, I know Palm Beach County, the point I'm making is, is that, you know, for me, I don't wanna put our lobby team in, in the crosshairs of being asked, I don't wanna put our legislators in the crosshairs of having to request this, take juice away from anything else if Lee, Charlotte, and Glades aren't on board with making it something. Now, I'm all about getting stuff done and checking off the box, I love that, and, and I don't care if it's one constituent or 2,000 constituents, if, if, if us adding this to If, if, if us adding this to our legislative priority gives it the energy to get it over the finish line, then let's do it. But I just think that this is one that gets added in the 11th hour after you've talked to your counterpart in these other three counties, and, and they say, yeah, this is something that we definitely wanna see arise to it. So to me, question mark on both sides of that one, unless y'all disagree.
Do not, wholeheartedly disagree. Furthermore, I, and, and I, I don't have the, the background to back this up, but I heard talk that there was even someone, a, a private landowner, that was working a whole different deal to do water farming that would solve all of those issues anyway.
And I've heard, I've heard that through the grapevine as well. I get back to, this ain't our day job, somebody needs to bring that up to us and let us know.
Well, it needs to be, that's...
It is your day job, by the way, Ms. Hunter.
Yes, sir.
Maybe Shane's. Do you, have you heard that Shane? Do you know anything about a water farming project that is on the Lee County side that would take care of this issue to start with?
I heard that's on our side.
Why didn't you say so?
You didn't ask, or I did?
Oh, man.
And I mentioned it last week.
He did, last board meeting.
Two weeks ago, yes. What I know, and all I know, is that, I believe Mr. Joe Beal, who's with, who owns a considerable amount of property in the County Line Drainage District, is pursuing an appropriation for water farming in the Grove there at County Line Drainage District. And they would like to take water from the County Line ditch and divert it in. And then, like, I don't know where it gets discharged, I haven't seen any plans on it. So my understanding and speaking to their engineer record, they felt like our project would help them.
Would help them?
Would help them.
Our project would help them?
Our project would help them, but that's all I know. I haven't had a conversation, have any more of their engineer record.
Before you get all fired up, what does that mean?
Yeah, I don't know, I think we need more information. And I don't think this needs to be on here until we have all that information in front of us.
And the reason I say it would help them is because they wanna make a direct connection to the County Line ditch. So we have a large swath of water, there'd be a diverter, a gate, or something that would discharge into Lee County, and then go to this water farming project.
The deal is that the other three counties don't support this, that we're gonna scratch it.
That's right, we should, I think we should scratch it now until we get all the facts in front of us. And it may be that we need to support that particular project with our juice, rather than going after a whole specific asking ourselves.
And we don't even, and we don't even have a request on our end.
No, that's right.
We don't even worry about making that ask.
That's right, I agree.
I, I, I know that, I just saw this and so did you, but knowing a little bit about this project, we're submitting right now for the CDBGDR dollars, because it's one of those pots of money that closes quickly. This was the only shovel-ready project we had, we didn't wanna lose that opportunity. And I'll tell you quite honestly, I don't know that this needs to be a legislative priority, because we're submitting for a CDBGDR.
That's right, yeah.
So it's still a priority, but I just, again, I think that we could probably take it off this list, but still follow up on the things that you had asked about, but, but we're submitting for this. It's, it, I hate to say it, but we are submitting for this.
So I think it oughta come off this list.
Yeah, that, that was a conversation we had the other day.
Okay.
I was waiting for it to get to that point, that's exactly what I was told when I asked about it. I was in the same boat, why do we keep going to this? And that's what I was, that was the explanation I got, was because it was the only project we had, yeah, would qualify for those funds right now. So that's, but that's, that's different, so I agree as well. But that was a conversation, two meetings back, we all discussed this and said the same thing we just said tonight. If the other counties weren't on board, then we were gonna take that off.
Whose districts have fallen?
I think it's, it's on mine.
Okay, and you're okay with it coming out?
Yes.
I think it oughta come out.
I, I do as well, but can I still get us to, to request that staff follows up? And that we get a report of some sort to know where Lee, Charlotte, and Glades stand on it?
Well, you know, it's been important for 35 years, I'm not saying it's not important today.
Yep.
But I just think that this is the wrong avenue for us to pursue, and we absolutely need to follow up.
Can't argue that point.
Right.
We did ask that, we did ask that.
All right.
And I'm sure, um, everyone knows Ms. Davis had to represent us in Washington since she couldn't be here tonight. She may have those answers. So really, we just need to leave this, leave this and move forward and let her get those answers too.
Okay.
Yeah, that started with Joe Spratt, when he was county commissioner.
Good grief.
And then I started getting the phone calls, phone calls, phone calls, but nothing ever happened, so.
Yeah.
I don't think, there's nothing we need to get shook up over Four Corners, after 30 years.
That's right.
I'm just tired of, I'm tired of having stuff like that on there, and we don't have a game plan to move it down the path of conquering it.
I think our legislators are tired of hearing us say it.
Yeah.
But anyway, if it don't get through this time, we need to forget about it.
Well, again, the only reason it was there was the project that was ready.
Yeah.
For the funds, it was, it was...
No, I got you, no, no, I understand the CDBR, I got that, I...
That was the only reason it was there.
All right.
Good one. So we agree it's off.
It's off.
Isn't there a motion for that, do we? We don't have a motion for that.
No, we strike, no, we don't need no motion.
And the second one...
Are you going to the number two or the second one above that?
Let's just work down, that's okay. So in, in talking with Superintendent Scott Bass...
All right, but we ain't done with number one now.
Oh, I thought we were.
No, we're not done.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I'm out of order, I apologize.
That one for last.
Okay, okay.
So, so in talking for the Glades County Regional Vocational Training Center.
Okay, yes.
If you try to take that off, I swear I'm, I'm gonna lose it.
Well, you fixing to lose it.
No, man, because listen, they don't, they're not guaranteed anything.
Let me explain.
They're not guaranteed anything. Did you see the video from there?
I did, it was awesome, it was really awesome. So we, so they are, although they're not, it, it, it almost is the same conversation what we just had about Four Corners. If we do this, we're probably gonna be the only ones pushing it.
No, it's 30, it's 33 years younger.
Yeah, well, other, other than the age, so they are, they have...
Hold on, you want me to keep, you want me to keep debating other than the age? Cause I can't.
No, let, let, let me just play out the scenario of what's going on.
This is employing humans.
Yeah, and I agree to all that. And so they have a very strong DEO jobs growth grant, and they're taking the team this Friday to meet with. They've already worked in the backgrounds with the lobbyists, they said, look, I said, what would key support today look like? He said, today, key support would look like everything, we've already written the letter, it was already taken care of, it's done, it's done. If we have any connections with the DEO office or the governor, that's really the decision-making body. They felt like they had it hedged pretty well, but if any of us had any, any, any weight that we could throw in there, that would be very much appreciative. Having said that, I don't believe any of those made it a legislative request. And so if we do, it's gonna almost be like we are at Four Corners again. We're gonna go be asking something for Collier County to get funding to put in Glades County all by ourself. And I just don't know that that's where we wanna be right now, nor do I even think that they're even asking for that. So to kinda make us look like we're out in left field on that.
Have you confirmed that, though?
Yes.
You've talked to Dr. Camilla Patton's office.
No, I talked to, I turned it to Superintendent Bass earlier, about an hour.
No, 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 I'm saying, I've, I've talked to Scott multiple times on this as well, he told me to calm down also. They also felt very strongly, two grant cycles ago, two grant cycles ago, they had it locked up. I don't know if y'all remember that.
Just last year.
It was done, it was coming, the money was, everybody relaxed, we got it. And, and then we're here.
Right.
And so we need to let her again. And so I'm not, I'm not saying it has to be on legislative priority list.
Yeah.
What I am saying is, is that, once again, from a regional perspective, we're, help me, help me with this now. It's Collier, working north to south, is Collier, Henry, Glades...
Charlotte.
Okachobee Highlands, or is Charlotte in there? I thought it was just a five-counted push.
Yeah, okay, you're right, I'm sorry.
I don't think Charlotte and Lee are in there.
Charlotte has her own, you're right.
I think it's Okachobee and Highlands to make up the five.
Okay.
So it's us, Collier, uh, us, Collier, Glades, Charlotte, and Okachobee, I mean, Okachobee and Highlands, to make that five. And so I think that if, if any of those five are making this on their list, because, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna know about that jobs growth grant.
Should be shortly.
I mean, like, within the next 14 days.
That's right, that's right.
Would you at least be receptive to, if we fail on that? If Glades County's willing to put it on their legislative priority? And if Collier County's willing to put it on their legislative priority? I know Okachobee and Highland, I don't know for a fact, but I know at one point they were, it was, they felt very strongly they were gonna do it.
Yes.
Will we be receptive to doing it then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's Plan B, right, so making this Plan B, let's drop it for now, and see how that goes, Plan B, if it fails and they need it, we're all about it.
I like it, I like it.
I mean, I know we fighting for ourselves, but it feel like we fighting for everybody else but us.
Yeah.
No, this ain't fighting, I just, the only thing I would say to that, Ms. Byrd, is I'm trying to get away from the imaginary line of Glades versus Henry.
That's right, yeah.
And I'm looking at it as, if you're sitting, if you're sitting in downtown Cluiston, or you're on the far east end of Cluiston, all the way up on the Palm Beach County line, as far as you can get.
Crooked hook.
You're 17 minutes from the Glades County Vocational Training Center. And it's a, and in my opinion, it's a safer ride than going, going into West Tech or coming all the way into Fort Myers Technical College. And it's a big, beautiful facility that's sitting there empty. That's not fair, it's a big, beautiful facility that's not sitting there being utilized to the best of its potential. So we all need to start hammering, and the legislators have been getting a get out of jail free card, in my opinion. Not talking bad about anybody, but I don't think we've been collectively asking, making the correct ask for that facility. So I, you know, with, with you and your role, look at what you've done, I think, you know, that this is it. But I have, I've talked with Mr. Bass as well, Superintendent Bass has told me it's done, that video is awesome. If that doesn't get it done, I'm gonna be dumbfounded.
Yeah.
You know, um, so I, I'm all about striking it, and, but with a, a asterisk that it, it gets pulled back up.
Possibly.
And Ms. Legislative aide, you'll, you'll be carrying this message to Representative Donalds, right?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
And if you have anything on paper that you want to email to me, absolutely.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you know his wife, but she's pretty, pretty passionate about education as well, so, yeah, slightly, right? Yeah, all right. Thank you so much.
Hey, so it brings us to...
Still got two more, which one are you gonna go to?
Public, public safety facilities. I think that's a, I think we have to.
I think that we just need, the only thing I would disagree on this one is, is, um, I don't know if we make a $5 million ask with, with not having details, you know what I mean?
Do you have details, Shane? Now, now the $5 million, where did it, I mean, do you not have a delineated?
I mean, details of hardening a building are gonna be pretty simple to get, you gotta bring it up to the windload categories.
But wouldn't you...
Like your paramedic station down there, is added, is added reinforcement, added steel?
Okay.
That's how you reinforce those type of buildings. Uh, the schools, it'll be the same thing, you're gonna do the, the infrastructure for your roofs are gonna be different. That's what fell in last year.
But I think this, the Commissioner, um, Wills...
I'm not sure $5 million's enough.
No, I don't, I don't...
If you're talking about throwing the schools in there, you just, you got lost that. $5 million's gone quick.
Here's what I'm saying, guys, here's what I'm saying, Ms. Byrd. I'm saying that we clearly are trying to lead this conversation, right? So which building do you envision? To me, the most bang for your buck in the city of Cluiston is Cluiston Middle School right on 8027. Argue that point, unless you wanna go to Cluiston High School.
The only situation with there is, they did, there was talk about that not being a shelter any longer, that a high school was going to be the shelter.
Okay.
So that, that would kind of, if that's the case, that was kind of the part of your argument there.
Sure, one they deem primary shelters is one we need to focus on.
What they're saying, the high school was the one that's gonna be that.
Yeah, the auditory...
High school has everything there, middle school has no generator, we're doing a portable there.
Okay.
And there was other issues there as well, so that was the conversation.
Okay, well...
There's one part of it.
So, so wherever, wherever facility is, is deemed to be the one that we're gonna utilize, to me, you know, generator standby, that's a half million dollar ask, bam, right there. That's, that's $500,000 going to that. And then I don't know if you need to harden either of your gyms, or, you know, emergency lighting or anything like that. I think you're gonna be good to go.
I, I think they do need some upgrade, cause they had some windows, you know, that they're worried about, that we're not, I don't think intended, speaking that way out of turn.
They're not hurricane resistant.
Right.
Keep in mind as well, that may not be the portion of the building that's actually designated as shelter.
And so, and so what I'm saying, Commissioner Wills, is this. While the ask is needed, and it definitely, and it definitely needs to be pushed forward, what I'm saying is, is that it needs to be a laser-like focus. And so I would just designate, Mr. Chair, I would designate with y'all's blessing for Commissioner Swindle to, to, to head this up. And, and, and say to us, okay, you know, Commissioner Swindle, in, in two weeks' time, you come back to that first meeting in September, and you're gonna say to us, okay, guys, our ask is, off the hip, 3.25 million? Or is it, or is it 1.5 million? And that's going to make sure that Cluiston Middle School or Cluiston High School, which is the one that the Henry County School Board designates as where we're going to house mass of humanity in the event a hurricane is coming. And then on the west side, it's, you know, it's gonna be whichever facility was serving us the best, but doesn't have that standby generator capabilities that literally an automatic transfer switch fires up and everything's going. I do think we need to be looking at ATSs, um, uh, you know, automatic transfer switches. I think that it needs to be, uh, safety in mind. And then I would say that the, the, the third and fourth ask would be looking at existing facilities like our, our administration building, or our EDC building, whatever that was. And I'm, and I'm not using those because I'm playing partial to the county. What I'm saying is, is that I know that those facilities were utilized during the storm. I know that we had to move people during the storm to another building, you know, that, that fell apart, or, you know, was getting exposed. So, you know, however that is, I just think that's another conversation that you queue up with our administrator. I think you oughta lean on our chair a lot to know exactly where we're leaning. I think you oughta lean on Alan Bowen over here on this side, and y'all oughta look at where we're at. But I think that you oughta lead this charge, Commissioner Swindle, because if one person's gonna be able to focus on it, it's just gonna make that ask, but harden that ask and give, give innate details so that when a legislator asks, we know, if you only give us a half a million...
Here's what we'll put it.
We're gonna do this, you know, with a generator in Cluiston High School gymnasium, or a generator in Country Oaks Elementary. And, and by the way, that's gonna designate our special needs shelter, cause right now, our special needs shelter in Henry County is just across the river in Glades County.
Mm-hmm.
That's not acceptable. And so I think that needs to be an ask that goes way up the line.
Yeah.
Because when we're getting calls from commissioners in Palm Beach County during a storm, and they're wanting to know, do y'all have more capacity with your special needs, because we're running out of room? My God, we need to use that to our advantage, and we need to make sure that needs being met also, you know?
Yeah, the special needs is gonna be a, a major priority. And then again, once you start looking at these facilities, you'll see that. The paramedics, EMS station, it's, it's nothing.
Yes, sir.
So we have to move them every year, we moved it to the health department, health department failed.
Yeah.
Health department to the EDC, generator failed.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's just, there's, there's a lot to that, there's, there's more than one.
Lot of layers.
Yes, sir.
And they gotta get the sheriff's department housed, meaning they had to stay in, in the courthouse.
Yes, sir.
So there's a lot of different, different things to look at there.
And that's, that's another one too, Commissioner Wills, I mean, just right there, is that, that's a, you know, is that another half million dollar upgrade? But I'm, in my opinion, I could be wrong, but in my opinion...
Strengthen in, in, in Henry County for the, uh, special need, cause we was in Glades County.
Yes, man, there is, there is not one.
You have to create the checklist of what they want, what you gotta do.
Yeah, special needs requires air conditioning, most of our shelters run air handlers only.
Yeah.
Plus you have to have electrical there for, for the, you know, oxygen, different things like that. So special needs is, is, is more detailed. If you don't have any place right now...
But I know Glades was overwhelmed, cause they brought someone to the, to the high school, the middle school, the, the little small rooms, they put them in there, cause we was, you know...
Yeah, you know, one thing too, Commissioner Swindle, that, um, I, I, I didn't realize the oxygen needs, and how, I mean, we were missing the mark badly on that. And so, you know, we, we just, we, I think we need to look in, I mean, that needs to be part of it, in my opinion.
Absolutely, and, and I know the school's working on some.
Yeah.
I know Mr. McCarthy's got some ask and has some things in motion, so it'll be good merging of the conversations.
It'd be one on each side.
Um, Dr. Pepe is a good resource for the special needs.
Okay.
Health department had that up.
Right, right.
And Glades County, they headed that up and told us what we had to provide.
Okay.
So would it be one for the whole county, where we have, it was a location?
A special needs, you mean?
Yes.
You know, I, I think right now, everything's thrown against the wall, I think we'd be glad to have one, period, wouldn't we?
We've been just shoving to Glades County.
Now, if we, again, once you start looking at this, that, that's something we can look at. You know, if we can use the high school in Cluiston, high school in LaBelle.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and then again, you know, our buildings probably, we're probably at a place where our buildings need to be evaluated. Is this a, is this a wind event, is this a rain event? Cause everything's different in your classifications out as well.
And I think they've done some of that, and so that's why I say...
And they have been, I mentioned that about six months ago, and I know they started looking at that, so.
Right.
They may come back and say, you can't use this for a shelter no more, you can't use this over here.
Right, that's right. And they did some of that, some of that.
They have, yeah.
Well, I sent an email to our county administrator this morning, or maybe it was yesterday, but I, and I CC'd Shane on it, and I just, you know, I asked for them to give us an update of where we're at with all of our standby generators, and how that, you know, how that rolls with our facilities. But obviously, that, that ask also needs to be extended to the school board to know, you know, if Dorian, let's, you know, you know, Dorian's looking like it's not gonna strengthen, we'll know a lot more this time tomorrow. But, you know, that thing was getting ready to bear down on us, and it's category two plus, you know? What have we really done to make ourselves more hard and better prepared for, for this storm this season?
My immediate reaction is, nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I would say as well, you know?
I don't know where school board's at, I do know that the high school here, all the schools in LaBelle, the only one that has a, has a generator is Country Oaks. And we had to get help there with the fuel tank, fuel tank was rusted, so we had to do that. High school does not have a generator and never was replaced, middle school does not have a generator. It has the switch, but it's not an ATS, it's a manual. Uh, the ones in Cluiston, I don't know what's at the high school, but I know John Boy has the only one there that I know has a generator of them.
And I go back to, Port LaBelle Utility Systems, their generators, when I remember looking at that list, their generators were relatively new and nice. But I go back to, in my opinion, that's, you know, you can be critical of us and say that we really haven't pushed that envelope, I think that we, we pushed a bit out the door, but what we really harp on of saying, okay, we have to push this ball down the field. And so, you know, this gets into one of those things where we're saying, well, Tallahassee's gonna save us. You know, to hell with Tallahassee or DC or anybody saving us, us needs to save us. And, and that means us finding resources and we need to do it. And, uh, you know, y'all, y'all have been, um, laser focused, in my opinion, on asking where are those FEMA reimbursements and all that stuff, and that's correct, so we need to all work together on that.
How many generators did we get? How many generators did we get? We just got a bunch of them. We got them. I, I visited that last year. We picked quite a few up, but I don't know the number we got. I know this comes from forestry.
Five from Division of Forestry that you helped facilitate.
It was five?
Sounds about right. There's like four or five in the back. I didn't, I don't know the exact number.
We're gonna use one of those at the Fort Dano Bridge. And it was, there was a couple of different ones we, we got.
Every one of those were trailer mounted, you know, those, those are all portable, so those are, those are great units. But I go back to, you know, do we, do we have a hundred foot of SO cord and, and, and a, a double throw and all, you know what I mean? You know, and so.
We're hard wiring it in.
Yeah, you know, so. All right. Last one I'm fired up about.
Oh, and we're not stuck on that five million, right?
No, sir.
Yeah, right. That's, that's the number we threw there and we need to, we know.
It's a catch-all.
Got it, got it.
But I'm telling you, Commissioner, you know, you know, if you give us X, where we're gonna be. Because you know the first thing you're gonna do when they see five million, what do we only give you two and a half?
Okay, gotcha.
We, we got, we got yelled at. Um, I know Emily has that number in there of eleven point one. Uh, because, because that's probably playing off of the twelve point one, I would assume. But Ms. Hunter witnessed firsthand the lobby team telling us, guys, that was like forty-three percent of the total award, you know, that the state gave last year. Uh, so, so we probably won't get forty-three percent of, of the total legislative, legislative amounted, uh, number throughout the state. With that being said, though, um, I don't know how many weeks I'm in on making the request. Shane gave me a map. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sleep, uh, with this map in the bed tonight as a warm fuzzy blanket. It makes me so happy. With the, uh, location overview from Tetra Tech. Uh, we had a discussion last board meeting about taking the million dollars and going from, y'all correct me if y'all heard, if I heard it incorrectly. There was, there was a theory of spending seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and going from, um, Air Glades having a temporary lift station adjacent to the current lift station and going just to the edge of the Air Glades property. They lost me whenever they said, but we will probably be abandoning that whenever the, no pun intended, airport takes off. I heard that correctly, right? Did y'all hear that or not? Nobody else heard that? It was just me?
I didn't hear it was gonna abandon it.
I dreamt it up. Shane? I, I swear I remember hearing it.
It's not what I understood, though.
What I heard.
For the record, Shane Parker, I'm not gonna say you dreamt it or, but I don't recall that conversation.
What conversation do you recall?
One million dollars, starting from the master lift station at Air Glades going north into the edge of the county property was, would be done for one million dollars.
And we would stop at the edge of the county property?
I don't recall abandoning it or nothing, but I know that AIA is looking at doing, I believe in lieu of a force main not happening, they planned on doing their own wastewater treatment plant, but I guess if a force main's there, they wouldn't pursue it. But that was done in the EA. The other thing that was mentioned was, what if we went the other way, how far it would go. And I said it puts you in the middle of a cane field. And what I emailed you today was two maps, one showing leaving the master lift station just south of Ocean Boy, going north to twenty-seven, down the road, the Dyke Road on the south side.
Say that, say, slow down now. You said leaving the master station.
Right, just south of the.
Okay, so there's this green line on the map right here. Okay, on the far left corner. This is just south of Ocean Boys, what you're saying.
South of Ocean Boy, going north toward twenty-seven, taking a right down the sheriff's access road, which are on the south side of the Flag Hole Canal C five. And going to the edge of the county property. That would be done for like seven hundred and something thousand dollars plus CEI services for inspection. The other route would put you in the middle of the cane field. You would tie into a force main, going to the city's wastewater treatment plant south of Harlem. Go west, and then you'd go maybe west a mile and then north quarter a mile. And stop in a cane field. That's the two choices.
Has everybody seen that map?
Now, did you send it to all of us?
No, sir.
He doesn't like y'all.
I guess not.
But he told us.
I'll send it to everybody.
I remember telling someone to see the map. I think, what, what you might have remembered is they said it was gonna be a dry line. It was gonna be something that was dry.
Until, right, until you connect the rest of it.
No, I'm gonna go back and watch the video. And, uh, I, I know for a fact, because I, I, I said to myself, I can't justify getting a million dollars from a legislator, going back up there, asking them again, just to know that a couple of years from now, we're gonna walk away from something. That's how you get no money ever again in your history of your existence.
Well, I do know that AIA's been pretty clear, I thought all along, that they really didn't even wanna tie into the force main if we did have it there.
If everybody will remember me, also, I've always said, this occurs regard, I don't care if anything ever is developed at Air Glades International Airport, to me, has no bearing on that, on that particular plan whatsoever. Please tell me y'all have heard that.
And so we should tie in, you should tie in at the northeast of the property, right? Is that what your intentions were?
No, my intentions were, my intentions were, by making that statement, was that we need this project, regardless of any development occurring at Air Glades. And, and it gets all muddled up, you know what I mean? Even, that's why I've even stopped referring it. I've stopped referring to it as the Air Glades Force Main. I've, I've just, it's the Force Main for me. I've removed that from my vernacular, because the moment you say Air Glades, everybody envisions a little guy named Fred Ford and jets landing on a runway. That's what they all, yo, woo, cargo, all right. And I, I saw, I've stopped using that word, and I've said, we've gotta get the force main in the ground. And so, we've got a million dollars.
Yeah, that's what everybody thought. Air Glades, when you talk.
A hundred percent, they all said it, didn't they? Every, every, every time you brought up that, and that was in front of them, they would say, oh, so that airport's taking off, huh? It's getting ready to happen. That's what you guys need twelve million dollars for? I say, no. That, I mean, yeah, well, hold on. And then, you know, oh, Harson said we don't need twelve million dollars for the airport, okay. So anyway, the point I'm making is, is Shane, is it, is it, you, you've heard my request multiple times now. You've got this map. I'm so excited about this map. In the, in the, forcing an event that the state were to award us another million dollars, or five million dollars, can Tetra Tech drill in on where that would take us? And can you also show us chronologically what that timeframe is, if we're awarded X number of dollars, to, to actually go out to construction, turn dirt and make that occur? And then, right in line with that, not only from a chronological standpoint of how long that would take, but also from a fiscal standpoint of what, of what that's gonna look like for, for its entirety. Because, listen, I'm not the brightest bulb in the box, right? So I love to see a line that stops right here, and you could say six million gets you to here. Ten million gets you to here, you know?
We could do something like that.
And, and furthermore, what would be interesting, again, because I know I've heard the conversation about US Sugar not even wanting to participate in the force main, maybe the, US Sugar, AIA. And so, just as we're talking about collaborating on these other items, some engineering or someone on some level probably should communicate that with them, because why would we put three quarters of a million of it through the property for them to not need it, want it, or anticipate on using it, where we could use it to go ahead and start creating the twenty-seven corridor force main, so that it could be used by those businesses as they come along there?
What do you dislike about what he just said?
I don't dislike anything. I just, we follow back up. Starting for twenty, the city is, from according to Jennifer Davis, the city's showing support for going from the lift station toward twenty-seven. US Sugar is showing support for that, so we know how far one million ago. I'll send you all a map, but it's about a mile west and then quarter mile north. And we're still probably maybe two miles or mile and a half south of twenty-seven. But I'll have them give you, but if they develop that piece of property, then they could extend a force main or tie into that existing force main, utilize it and pump it to the city.
So the, so, and, and to take the conversation a little bit further, you said the words, the city's in support of.
I heard that they were in support of it.
Well, I would hope so. And I would hope that it would even go a little bit further than that, right? Surely they're not just writing letters of support here. They stand to be a huge beneficiary of that.
But sir, they need to, they need, this needs to be one of their top three legislative priorities. Now, whether, whether their focus is fixing their sewer treatment plant, so they have more capacity, or facilitating a, 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 you know, bifurcated ask, so that we can, we can all stand in locked arms and say, what's good for them is good for us on this. It doesn't, I, we need, we need to, we need to, so, that's why I've been wanting to have a joint meeting.
Anyway, if you hooked it up, would the city of Cloiston's plant be able to service that?
Yes, sir. What, let me rephrase that answer. From what I've been led to believe is that today, they would be able to be, service it. A couple of years ago, I know for a fact that the Department of Environmental Protection found the money for us to do this, and the city of Cloiston said, we can't, we can't handle the capacity. So Charles Chapman made the most disgusting phone call he's ever made in his life. He told me at the time and said, sorry, Mr. Little John, but we're gonna go ahead and, and, uh, turn down the state revolving trust fund grant, and we're not, we're not gonna accept that. And the nut on that was twenty-six thousand dollars a year. And, and this, this would essentially, you know, for lack of a better word, would be done. People wanna argue that point, we can go, we can go look it up. Shane, I got a couple of questions. Air Glades Route One. Can you, can you tell me why that's, you know, what I'm understanding is, is, uh, you know, you're bringing it out coming on that yellow line, the Air Glades Alternative Route Five?
Can you get it on, Margaret, do you have it?
You don't have?
They're talking cryptic.
Okay. Well, let's just, I'll tell you what. Not gonna be at the board meeting next month, the first one, so we can't talk about it together. But commissioners, y'all think we should have, should we have a non-scheduled workshop, schedule it right now and just discuss, just discuss this item with the city of Cloiston?
Look, again.
I think it's worth us lobbying them to make sure they're on the same page with us.
Like Four Corners. If we're not in, if we're not in lockstep with what we're asking, one of the other of us is gonna look like knuckleheads going in there.
Sounds like you're saying yes.
I am saying yes.
What's your, what's your question about Route One?
No, I'm not gonna ask you that question now, because I don't understand why you're going to a cane field and not going right up beside Lewis Boulevard.
That was the most economically feasible route to go, based on the due diligence report that we had from Tetra Tech.
Cool. Is that like my core samples or what, what do they, how do they?
Utilities, conflicts, limited right of way. And then that area is shown for going to the future development to industrial, so you're going out and going into all land.
Do where the industrial's going with it even.
And we've already got, there's already ninety percent design drawings. I just, I'm meeting with Tetra Tech next week to go over my comments, so they can finalize them, so we're basically.
And then where are we at with the easements?
Are we in the same boat? As far as there any meeting with them? Do we have to do the same thing as that we do with Glades County?
Do we, do we need a meeting with them?
You have to call it an official meeting?
Commissioner Turner, what, do you feel comfortable just going to our colleagues there, you individually saying, here's what we're doing? Y'all, what's your ask?
I'll even go a step further. I'll say, why don't we let our county administrator talk to all of them? And we can all talk individually, and they can, she can talk with their new city manager, and they can, they can bring back a suggestion to us. You gotta be in that room, right? And I think it'd be awesome if Tetra Tech's representative was in there as well.
And if we feel.
Because they're queued up. They're queued up as a technical representative on this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and, and if they're not, if we don't feel like it's going in the correct direction and we need to sit down with them, then we can go through the minutia of doing what we have to do.
It got sideways. It was, there was a number of different variables and it made it, it all made it odd, so.
Some of the city's issues, they don't want you planning their sandbox.
That's right.
So, I think, I think that was a little bit of it, uh, to be honest.
We had the same, we had the same issues. We reached out to help over here and got told the same thing.
Well, I like, I'm like a kitty cat. I'll run up in your, in your sandbox quick.
Scratch around.
Go any playground.
What we need to do is we need to find out on that one as well, just like we were talking about the. If y'all can get with the city and then bring it back, then we can do that.
Shane, this map's awesome.
It really is, Shane. It'd be nice.
Wish I had it. I wish I had it, Shane.
I thought I put that out there, you know?
He's not even here to vote on raises next time.
Oh, and then, and then the last thing, the last thing on that, though, is I think, Emily, I know, I, I know you're not asking for eleven point one, but I think in, in an effort to help Ms. Hunter with this process and Gray Robinson, we need to, we need to, Shane, be able to say, our, our numbers for, in totality, is, uh, eleven point one, and it's done. And everybody's cutting ribbons and, and Zaxby's can come in and locate on the twenty-seven corridor, right? Chick-fil-A. But if you give us five hundred thousand, or you give us five million, this is where it's gonna take us. They, they've all said that to the person in Tallahassee. Commissioner, I need to be able to see this roadmap, so to speak, to how we're gonna get there. So give us that, give us that tool, please.
Well, I think that shows more of a plan.
Yes, sir.
You know, when they ask, you know, okay, well, if, if we only give you two point five million, what's it gonna do? Let's go bring us to this point.
And Shane, they gotta, they gotta know. They have to know in that checklist that all easements are acquired. There's not somebody that's gonna come out of the woodwork and say, oh, I'm sorry, you know, talk to my attorney, because you guys didn't perform due diligence to say, start, start running a ditch witch across my land and putting something in the ground, you know? So, so we need to, we need to have those check boxes hit, so that they can see that that's all done.
Are we missing anything before, before you leave? Out of everything that we've talked about, have, need, I don't wanna overlook anything.
Does anybody need anything else that y'all could think of? I know there, I mean, I know there's stuff, but I don't, I don't wanna go to Tallahassee and ask for anything else.
Well, I, 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 I am really happy about the fact that we can narrow down and be laser focused when we go, rather than having a long litany of things of, you know, hey, is there any of these you can help with? So I think it'd be great to be able to go and say.
We got two asks.
We got two asks, and we, there are legitimate needs. Help out.
That was one of our goals, is not to keep adding something, but to complete something we started. So if, if, it's worthless if we don't finish what we started, and we go back and ask for another roof and haven't even finished building the house, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I just like that we're not trying to add more to it. We need to complete what we're doing first before we ask for something different, because I think I heard you say, if you're not ready to turn dirt, they gonna cut you down anyway.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, you know, the only thing, the only other thing I'm gonna add to this whole discussion, and I, and I very much so need to be careful on it, is, uh, because I conflict out, because of what my day job is. But we really need to do, we really do need to look at making, um, a federal and a state ask on the Fort Dano Bridge. Because I just, I mean, every time I turn around, I'm getting another update from Ms. Hunter that it's, it's down. And, and staff drops in and says, hey, do you have this relay? Hey, do you have that? You know what I mean? And so.
To rehab or to rebuild?
You know, rehab for fifteen to twenty-five million, probably gets you an extended of twenty-five, thirty years. Building it brand new is a forty-five to sixty million dollar project, probably. City, the city of Fort Lauderdale just did theirs in Eleventh Avenue. It's, it's, it, our old bridge was given to us from the city of Fort Lauderdale. And we redid the bridge at Eleventh Avenue, and that's a much tighter footprint, the easements and everything you're dealing with. I wanna say it was a seventeen million dollar job, and, and there was, theirs was in much better shape than ours is right now, you know? I can look that up and tell you exactly what it was.
How often do the bridges go down?
You know, I don't know how often it goes down. I don't know, but from what I hear, it's quite frequent.
Quite often.
Quite often.
Does that need to be an ask?
I don't think it needs to be an ask in this legislative appropriation. I do think, though, that we need to, we need to do everything in our power with staff to work it into the five-year request. It needs to just be on the five-year. They can start, they can start planning that.
That's a big.
They can build it right in.
That's a big.
They can build it right in.
Like you said, you haven't seen. Well, but you just said you hadn't seen four million in eight, ten years you've been on, so fifteen million.
For us, for one ask, but as this, as, and, and the only thing they're gonna pop us on is the fact that it's, you look at what it actually services. You know, it's not even arterial. I mean, it's, it's way down the line of the volume of traffic that it has. However, however, you build that into the five-year plan and you're, you know, you're on a seven or eight billion dollar budget. They can kind of plug that in there. What's forty million dollars to, I don't know what District One's actual allocation is, but it's pretty strong.
I agree that we need to start looking at it and adding the, uh, some type of phased approach or something in the coming years.
And then the, the, one of my items that I had, Commissioner, not to steal any of your thunder, for whatever reason, I thought you weren't gonna be here tonight. I thought you had your, uh,
I was in Tampa.
Your highway meeting already. My man. Uh, the Helms Road signals, I, I wanted to get an update from Shane on that discussion, because I was thinking that this is an easy thing to, to put in there. District One can, can, District One might be appreciative if we were, if he got asked, but Shane's gonna know.
We, uh, last meeting, I mentioned that we met with the district Friday, I think it was the ninth. We had our board meeting on Tuesday. The district was receptive to doing temporary maintenance of traffic signals. Johnson's working on, their subconsultant KCA's working on the design, the structural analysis. Their men in the plans are gonna submit them back to DOT for approval. It'll be a three-day turnaround review, and they'll provide comments if any. I signed, well, I didn't sign. I authorized them to proceed with the two proposals from KCA under their, they have like a not to exceed amount for some consulting services on Helms Road. So I told them, yes, those prices were good. I believe it was a two-week timeframe from KCA to have a structural analysis done.
DOT's funding all of it?
DOT a hundred percent funding.
You won't need nothing from us, no approvals, anything.
I don't need anything from you. And then you already approved the change order for the signals, once I negotiate it. So once they have the plans done, and once, um, they have the plans done, they give it to DOT. If they finalize everything out, then I negotiate a change order, bring it to Mark, and then he approves it.
How many months would that be?
I don't know yet. It's two weeks till I get the plans, till they have a structural cals done, so.
Is it gonna drag out six months?
I hope not. So if it's two weeks, have the structural cals done, Johnson updates their plans, let's say that takes another week to give them two weeks, and then three days for DOT to review. So a month, we should know something.
So what I'm understanding, Shane, though, is this'll, this'll still be a temporary solution. This could be.
This is a temporary.
A mast arm on a trailer?
No, no trailers. It'd be, we're looking at doing concrete poles.
Concrete poles with string across them?
String across that meet lower wind standards. They have agreed to let us do a deviation, and Johnson's working on that at the intersection of twenty-nine and Helms Road, so we don't have to do mast arms there now, the district said. Do the deviation.
You'll leave that there forever?
No, leave it there for like probably less than five years till it gets blowed out by us or the state, when they do the four-laning of the intersection. So that was a saving of like maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. The other one, their mast arms, they're looking at there's something different, but we've already got a design already approved for that. We're trying to find a temporary solution so we can provide a safety to the public, so they don't get smashed in a four-lane to a four-lane intersection, so.
So when they gonna do the four-laning?
I don't know. They don't, they only have sixty percent plans for twenty-nine. They have no funding for right of way and no funding for construction, to my knowledge, so.
No funding for the roundabouts?
Not that I've seen yet.
Man, this is my day, isn't it? Had this old ugly shirt on. Now you're gonna bring up roundabouts. Lord Jesus. We go over another prayer again. Okay, you guys have something else for us?
Anything else?
One more time?
Go Gators.
Actually, we might, we might be going to Tallahassee with two requests this year. That'd be nice.
I think that's great.
How not awesome would it be if we about a thousand percent too, you know? Instead of this litany of thirteen things, you can't really speak to half of them.
A postcard full of things.
Yeah, we got one more thing on the agenda. Just an add-on.
Yes, uh, so the auditor that audits the county and the constitutional officers, contract expires end of this year. We have to have, go through new procurement. We may end up with the same firm, but we have to go through the procurement. And so there's a committee by statute that has to oversee that, the audit committee, and it's composed of the constitutional officers. Each of the four of them, or each of the five of them, plus one of you. And so you need to make your appointment to the committee, because I need to get some meetings going for that.
Anyone just?
Have a desire?
Have a desire to do that?
Mitch might have that.
You do, Ms. Byrd?
I said Mitch might have that desire. I ain't gonna talk long on that one.
Ms. Harris, you will? Okay, so everybody good with that? Thank you, Ms. Harris. We appreciate it. Ms. Byrd should, should've jumped up, but she didn't, so. So you, you got, um, we don't need to take any action on that, though, correct, Mark?
No vote.
Okay, so, raise to the here of the public, anybody in the public like to address the board tonight? Business by district, Commissioner Swindle.
I, I hate to take the thunder away from the, uh, code enforcement commissioner, but I would love to hear how, where, where are we in-house coming along with the, the, because last meeting we passed, and we're gonna, we're moving forward with the special magistrate.
Potential thereof.
The RFP for the special magistrate has been out for a couple, three weeks now. Tomorrow it is opening for it. The deadline, and then we'll see what we get. And then there's the ranking committee, which is, consists of Ms. Embly, um, the city attorney, and the Charlotte County Code Enforcement Supervisor, just for his expertise on it. They'll meet next week, when? Next Thursday, and then September tenth will be your next meeting, and you'll.
We'll have a proposal.
We'll have the proposal from.
Oh, awesome. That's great. Are you gonna be here, Commissioner Turner?
Next, next.
On the tenth, September tenth? Oh, man.
I might tune in, though.
Yeah, you should.
I might be able to tune in.
I think you should. Okay.
What would it be? So it'd be, yeah, midnight. Okay, I could probably do that.
You're missing that night, too?
I'm coming.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, that's all, thanks. I'm just really excited about that and ready to see something happen there. Commissioner Byrd?
Just wanna, um, uh, this, I believe it was in April, May, the board approved us of giving, um, one of the residents, uh, the key to the city, to the county. Want you to know she's not doing well, so, but I wanna thank you guys for, you know, making that happen. Ninety-three years old, and she get to get her flowers while she was living, so just wanna tell you guys thank you. She's not doing well right now, so keep her covered in your prayer. Ms. Savannah, we call her Big Mama. keep her covered in your prayer. Ms. Savannah, we call her Big Mama. Well, Wilson, Willis.
Willis.
So keep her covered. Um, appreciate you guys doing that for her. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
I don't know if anybody's had a chance to see Wain TV tonight. They had a big, uh, coverage on the, uh, opening of the terminal. He interviewed a pilot from out of town. And, uh, he said that he's been passing over the airport because there wasn't nothing here and he's gonna start coming back. And, uh, he's talking about the economy, what it's gonna do for the economy when you do the airports. So, uh, anyway, he had a real nice deal. Did you know anything about it, Tommy?
No, sir.
Okay. But they did a real good job. We had a real good turnout at the opening of the terminal too. It's gonna be an asset to the county and the city.
When's the restaurant gonna open?
Couple of months.
Okay.
I don't think we have a meeting before then, but on the September the ninth, there's a community meeting in Harlem concerning the airport and there'll be support. There's the school board, Mike Swindell, Joe the Projects, Career Source, different ones that were supporting. So it's September the ninth and I will send you guys out a flyer.
Where, where you gonna support?
It's, it's gonna be for the airport, but those are supporters to the training that need to come in. So.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And I'll send you out a flyer.
Are you finished? I would like to add one thing if I can go back. And along those same lines, I just get caught up in my own little trench. One of the things that I'm working on now on the forefront of my day job is trying to create the aura of an aviation community. We, we've got, we've got, you know, obviously one of potentially the largest airport transactions of our era, you know, gonna happen here in our county. And so what I'm, what I'm working on is how do we create the era of an aviation community, not just an airport that happens to be in our county. And so we're working on doing some things like maybe some FAA ground school in our school systems where students can get their FAA ground school out of the way, looking at other things that go along with that, logistics. Um, uh, and then as time progresses and we see what other players come into the picture, maybe we have the opportunity to do some avionics trainings, AMP trainings and things like that within our school system. So we're looking at that, uh, to add to our portfolio of workforce development a, as time goes along and we unfold what happens. So just give you a heads up on that.
Yes, sir. Um, Shane, uh, the road and bridge department, I don't, I don't know who exactly took care of it, but, uh, had a constituent that called. They had a significant issue with, uh, water. As you all know, you know, I think at one point we had thirteen inches in ten days. Um, I know it filled up, I've gotten different reports, they were twenty inches, you know, and we were, I mean, we were kind of fortunate. I know a lot of people's feet are very wet right now, but we've been fortunate because to me, this kind of exposes where there might be some weak links in the system or some blockages that are there. I think in Flag Hole right now, some of the directional roads, you know, Oak Pine, I think there's a couple of issues. If you could have somebody ride through there and check it out. Um, I know there are actually, but what I would like to say though, is I think that for the most part, our systems are performing pretty dad gum good. And when you have had to react, I think that y'all have spun on a dime and went out there and got after it. So thank you very much. The constituents are, are very appreciative of that. Um, I did have the request for the Tetra Tech item. I'm glad we had that conversation, uh, as it relates to getting an update on that. I was looking back through my notes and, and I mean, uh, fourteen months ago, I asked for that Tetra Tech deal. I also asked for a fire department workshop and a recreation department, uh, workshop, and I got both sides. And I made the comment that we give a hundred and fifty thousand towards the, the city of Cloiston. Uh, I've since been educated that it's actually one seventy-four and some change, but I'd like to, I'd like to get educated on that. So I, I really do want to request you all that we have an, an update on our workshop, a workshop specifically catered towards recreation. And we don't make it just a East County rec. We don't make it just a West County rec, but it's an overview. And if your staff wants to come and educate us on what y'all are doing, where you're at from a budgetary standpoint and then the same thing. And the reason why I bring this up, uh, Commissioner Bird, is, um, I really, I really want us to look at as we move out of the fall and into the winter, um, I want to look at us taking East County dollars and trying to, uh, create a city, a city, county, county being the lead agent for a change, um, recreational basketball program. I think that we really need to challenge ourselves to do that.
We did something on the local level. We had kids from both sides of the, from the city and, um, the Harlem area. So.
That was this summer?
That was this summer.
Yes, ma'am. I'm talking about how we do little league baseball or whatever it's called now in, in pony league. You know, an actual league. And I, I'd like to just put it out there from an advisory standpoint and see if we have, if we have the, um, moms and dads, aunts and uncles and, uh, you know, uh, just other, other people from a demographic standpoint that want to come out and actually support that. We have AYS, uh, we have baseball, we have softball. You know, we have football cover. By the way, we had a packed football game last Friday night. How, y'all did as well. A big showing against Southwest Florida Christian. You know, I, but I think we're missing something there. When I was a little, little guy, I remember there was a Glades Gas, uh, basketball team. There was a Lions basketball team. You know, I remember my brothers played on it. I can't play basketball to save my life. I'm terrible at it. Because we didn't have a youth league. So, you know, granted, I think that we need to worry more about reading, but at the same time, it, it, you know, I'm embarrassed to say this, but if it wasn't for athletics, I would not be as functionally literate as I am because athletics made me, made me get into, um, a better, being a better student. Yes, sir.
We've got thirteen teams and a hundred and, uh, about forty K through second graders. And we're going into our forty-ninth, forty-ninth year.
And that doesn't get you fired up, you know? And I think they smoked us last year in basketball, didn't you? You see what I mean? The trash this guy talks, huh? And saying, hold on, Ms. Butler getting fired up now. Are you talking about that grandbaby? Hold on. Hold on, guys. Decor them, decor them. Then we have to stay professional. Okay? I'm a very professional person, Ms. Butler. You know, I like to cake con. For forty-nine years, forty-nine years LaBelle's been doing it, Ms. Bird. Forty-nine years LaBelle's been doing it.
We, we kind of piggyback with them. We had a hundred players this summer, so.
For one weekend.
Just, no, that, that one, that was something separate. Somebody else done that. Ours was through the summer, so.
That's awesome. So let's carry it, let's carry it further. You know what I mean? So that's part of that workshop. That's a great discussion for us to have.
We had an adult league this year as well.
Yeah.
They had got, I think, six or eight teams.
And so.
For several months as well, yeah.
And you know, we give, we give money to the city of Cloiston. I know that the city, I mean, the city also receives a stipend from the school board. But, you know, how do we get that middle school gym open? How do we get that high school gym open? What are the liability issues associated with that? How do we make it worth the traveling rotation? And then it's something that nobody likes, but I'm gonna tell y'all. When I went to the Midwest, I was dumbfounded at how those cats can shoot. And it's because they get locked in a gym all during winter.
Six months.
Yeah, because it's horrible, right? But we should take advantage of our, of our climate and, and still make our babies run outside on those courts that are nice that we have.
You can go to Sarasota, some places in Fort Myers and they're packed all the time.
Yes, sir. You can go straight down Palm Beach Avenue into Fort Myers on that, on that.
I'll tell you, um, for Harlem, you need a, you, you gotta have an air conditioner.
I don't disagree with you, but that's, but that's a problem, Ms. Bird. I can remember working out, uh, in the, in the weight room at CHS, going out, we would run seven-on-seven on the field there. And then I would take a herd of humans in my F-150 or in my Jeep Wrangler and we would go out to the Harlem Gym and I could never, I could never dunk on a goal that was ten-four. But Philip Summers and, and, and fill in the blank, uh, Stephon Bradford, all of them would have a blast, but it was a thousand degrees in that gym, you know? It was like a rite of tradition. Here it is, twenty nineteen. We still don't have an air conditioner.
Most of our games is at Up to Grove.
That's, uh, that's not air conditioned.
Same as Harlem.
We don't need air conditioning. And, uh, on Saturday, we use the Husky during the week here and Saturday, four games.
So I want all the, I want to see that on plan, on paper, because I think that we just need to lead the charge on it, Ms. Bird. We've, in my tenure as the commissioner, we've not led the charge on anything. We've just stroked checks and talked about it. Countywide, Ms. Bird, I know that the recreation program in Harlem, it had a little hiatus there for a little while. It's back up and running now. You have babies that are learning how to swim. We got the pool open. You know, there's a lot of good things that are occurring. I want to expand upon that. And I don't want to limit it to just Harlem. I want that cat that's staying in Hooker's Point or Flag Hole or Montura or whatever, I want them all to come in and, and want to, and want to ball out. So, um, that, that's where I'm at with that. Um, properties that have, to, to your question about, um, code enforcement, properties that have four lanes or more, and then we have properties that are in litigation status. Could we just get a general update on that?
Okay, the, there's two in litigation status. The, um, INA group, that was the seven twenty-five Arkansas Avenue with lanes that we filed the foreclose on. Um, they defaulted. We got a default judgment. Foreclosure was scheduled for, I think, September fourth. And then, um, in the meantime, I didn't know this, but the owner, out-of-state company had it for sale and listed for sale with Sugar Realty and they got a contract to sell it to somebody, uh, who's gonna put a mobile home on it and Kenny, Kenny might have, I think he said, called some of you because he's the one who's putting the unit on there. So anyway, we, um, agreed to postpone the sale because they, uh, the, Mr. Kenny and, and Sam Walker asked me to so that they could close because they expected to be able to close, but they wouldn't be able to close before September fourth. So we postponed the foreclosure sale to October second to give them time to close on that sale. But we're gonna get paid off, you know, as part of that transaction.
They'll get your money back.
Get our money through that. That's that one. And then, um, Rodriguez is the other one we sued on, the twelve-twenty-four, County Route seventy-eight with a lot of junk out there and uh, staff have been working hard to try to, you know, we filed the lawsuit. She responded. She doesn't have an attorney, you know.
I was by there yesterday and she's, uh, I don't know how she accumulates.
She's taking things off, but she's bringing things on.
Yeah, she's, she's back where she started.
Yeah. And so, uh, we did have a volunteer group that was gonna come out there and clean up. First Baptist of LaBelle was gonna come out there and like provide manpower and she agreed to that, but then we got hung up with, she has dogs, like, and she, and so that wasn't gonna work. And so bottom line is, it's really kind of stalled. And so, um, just yesterday, I talked with staff about it and we're gonna schedule her for deposition. You know, talk to her about, you know, in a formal setting, you know, which is what you do in a court case, uh, about what she has going on out there and how it doesn't comply and what her explanation is and what she's gonna do about it. And hopefully that will prompt some action to get this moved.
She got family? She got family, local family?
So she doesn't, so she doesn't show up for deposition? What happened?
Well, she could be held in contempt of court if she fails to show up for a deposition. Yeah. I mean, that, the judge isn't gonna do that right away. He's gonna find out what her excuse is and let it be rescheduled probably, but ultimately she could.
Um, well, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like, I, I don't know if it's too much to ask, uh, but I'd, I'd love to just see a general timeline and I'd love to see, uh, I, I know you have, you've given us multiple reports. I'd just love to see an update of that. Um, Assemblage. And then, um, do, do you have the ability with our software to just say, properties, X number of lanes? We're gonna, we're gonna push it to, uh, an Excel master and say, here it is. It's seventy-three properties or it's four properties that have four lanes or more. Is that a, is that a terribly difficult process?
I'll look into that. It turns out to be terrible.
Okay.
But I, I think it should be doable.
It seems like you've done a version of that.
You want properties with like four or more lanes.
Yes, ma'am. And I'd just love to see that chronological timeframe associated with those to see what, what we're looking at with how we're, we're dealing with those. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that there's, there's, it's gonna jump out at us. We're gonna see a huge, uh, percentage of bad performers in that, that, if, you know, are we addressing that? So that's it in a nutshell. Um, big nutshell. Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I will not be attending the next meeting. I do want to share a sentiment probably the most calls I've received in my, my tenure as a commissioner, um, about the re-implementation of the non-for-profit or places of worship. MSBU. How, can y'all, can y'all refresh me on that? Um.
I can. Um, so, you know, at the board meeting, I think it was July, the July meeting where you authorized us to move forward with that because the, for the most part, the churches and nonprofits had been not, had not been assessed. Now, there were exceptions for that. There were some churches that were assessed for some of the MSBU's and, uh, but were omitted for others. There were some churches that were getting a total pass. It was really a hodgepodge about.
And it, there was no rhyme or reason, was there?
I, yeah, yeah, I couldn't say that there was. So probably no. It just kind of fell that way, you know, and that's how it happened. So we dug into it, found out, you know, and determined what needed to be assessed. And, and then that's what we brought to you in July and you said, okay, move forward. So we did the notice letters that went out. I think the fifteenth, uh, letters went out. The trim notices went out. It would have been included on that too.
Yes, it was. It was, it was clearly included with, with trim, with another people and, and a number of constituents were very upset and felt that this was an overreach by us. The number one sentiment that I got was, you know, how dare you ask for something and you have it? You, you've, you know, you can't just come out of the clear blue sky and ask for this. This is an attack on our facility.
Against this service.
And so what, what I, what I tried to, what I tried to, uh, articulate back time and time again, and y'all tell me if you disagree with this, was I said, the county's just trying to be consistent because I feel that, that place X, which is a non-for-profit or a place of worship, is not being assessed anything. Place Y that's right across the ditch or right across the road does the same exact thing is being assessed. I don't know how the county can say it's fair for this one to be assessed and this one not to be assessed. And I guess in the, in the language, um, I didn't read it. Um, one specific pastor sent it to me and I, I didn't read it in its entirety. I, I skimmed through it real quick and then forwarded it onto the county administrator and said, just making you aware that there are a number of people that are asking about this. But, um, I guess we're saying that there's a million and a half dollars of, of revenue that are being generated.
Yeah, okay.
That was a, that was a strong point of what in the world, you know?
Okay, well, that, okay, so the statute requires that our notice letter include certain information. And so we have to include and tell the property owner how much we're assessing them.
Yep.
And that was in there. It was like a, it was like a table that had all these facts and that was one of them. And then another required fact is we have to tell how much that MSBU collects in total, grand total, from everybody.
Yep.
And you might say that's an irrelevant figure to a particular taxpayer, but you know, that's, but the statute says. So some of those MSBU's do bring in big dollars. I mean, solid waste is like two million or something.
Or, or more. Yeah, it's huge.
Fire is hundreds and hundreds of thousands and mosquito waste too. But, you know, that's, they're, they have a lot of needs. But that's for every taxpayer.
Yep.
How do you determine how much they assess? I know the garbage fee is the same for it, but how much do you determine? Is it square foot? Like you might have a church that's only so many feet, then you have another large church. How do you determine how much they assess?
Well, that's not us though.
It's property appraisers.
Well, it, well, the rate is, the rate of assessment is you. The, the, the size of the building is the property appraiser. But so which MSBU? It depends on the MSBU, Ms. Bird. Uh, the assessment rate varies per acre, per square foot, per dwelling, per vacant lot.
Some are flat.
Yeah. So it depends on the MSBU really.
So if they're in the city, they're not affected?
No, they, they would.
They're not affected by us. Uh, right, because we don't do MSBU's in cities. But, you know, the cities have MS, well, at least LaBelle does.
Yeah.
I know I get them, you know, from them.
They have lights.
Yeah, they do.
Now, one of the pastors told me that, uh, they wasn't charging them for garbage pickup.
Okay. Uh, the, the way it's supposed to work is houses are supposed to be assessed on the tax bill. A commercial account for the church as a, as an overall, um, facility is not supposed to be assessed. It's supposed to have a commercial account, like a dumpster with the, or, or a can service with the, with the hauler. So if you said, you heard a church that wasn't being assessed, well, maybe they have no houses.
Or they had a parsonage.
Well, a parsonage that's still a parsonage should be assessed as a house. A parsonage that is now a meeting room should not be assessed as a house. It should, and they, they don't get assessed by us, but instead they have a commercial account with the hauler, just like any business.
What did the, but let me ask you this, just, I mean, wow, I can't believe I can't even speak to this, but so you have a church that has a commercial account. They have a parsonage on the backside of the lot. Are they able to, are they able to not have to duplicate? And are they able to just use their commercial account?
Yeah, you, no. He can maybe.
You would, you do not?
Just because you have the church doesn't mean you have to have a dumpster. I've, I've been looking at this.
Oh, you do not?
No.
Okay.
You can have the, you can have a canned service.
Okay.
Realistically, a church generates four bags of garbage a week, maybe.
Because, because, because we would, we would be creating an undue burden on a church to make them have to have a commercial account.
Dumpster, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Only if they want it.
Yep, okay.
In every parsonage, somebody's not living in it. Like, most time it's a business or.
So if it's not, if it's not a living dwelling, lived-in dwelling, then they don't have to have that aspect on it?
Anything.
You, you, well, you would still have a canned service. You still have garbage on site.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Still have canned service.
It would be just, yeah.
The dumpster's a large amount. So you can still, now, we're in the process of all this in Port LaBelle, which we, you looked at ours and we're, we're paying quite a few MSBU's already. We're not even built yet. We got five acres out there, so. But again, you know, if we're getting a service, I don't have a problem. And I'm sure there's a lot of pastors mad at me for sitting here saying that, but the reality is if I'm getting a service, I just pay for it, whether it's my church, my home, whatever the case may be. But the reality is, if I'm getting a service, I just pay for it, whether it's my church, my home, whatever the case may be. I'm no different than anyone else and, than anyone else, so.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wills, let me ask you this, though. What do you say to the church that says, okay, we hear what you're saying, we understand that, I'm getting a service, I should have to pay for it? But how dare you come out of the clear blue sky and, and, and go from zero to, you need fifteen hundred dollars this year? Or you need twenty-five hundred dollars this year?
Well, I, again, if I'm receiving a service, if, if my service amount is fifteen hundred dollars, that's what it is. Now, if you wanted to say, hey, you know what, we, we're gonna do this, we're gonna go half the assessment this year, half the assessment next year. I'm not gonna argue that either, but, but the, the reality is, we shouldn't be sitting here with our handout, asking for a handout.
Yeah.
They're wanting some sort of phased approach?
Well, what? No one is, no one is, no one has proposed a phased approach. It's crazy that you said that, because that's exactly what my mind went to. I say, well, this, I think that this is something that we definitely need to contemplate, a phased-in approach. Because I can see where a two thousand dollar hit to an, an outside-the-community rural church that has a very small congregation.
That, that would, that would cripple them, just about put them out of business.
That's exact, so I'm not mistaken in that, right?
No, you're not. A lot of smaller churches, the reality is, that, that.
That's the difference in keeping your doors open?
That's right.
Or not, or not, or not serving?
It really can be.
Your, your, um, your congregation.
Really can be.
And so I just think that we need to, we need to understand that, in this instance, we, we, we have to find common ground on this one, I guess. And being one of the biggest, you know, thought supporters of, we got, you know, we can't go out there and provide a service? And be the lawn mowing service of the county? And then not turn around and ask for people to pay for it? But I think that this is one of those ones where, I don't know how this has been pushed through the cracks for all these years.
That's what I'm saying, you, we, something that was done, that, that, something that wasn't done, then it's like we're punishing them for what we didn't do.
That's exactly, that's correct, Ms. Bird.
So the thing of it is, is all of a sudden, you say, I got a house payment now of five hundred dollars from January, I can't meet that.
Yeah.
So you have to find a way to, like you say, I remember when the garbage came in, and it, it changed, but you're kind of easier than I think.
Yeah.
They didn't just come in and say, your garbage fee changed, and you, you have to do the same thing. Because like you said, they've got a small congregation, they just is going from, from Sunday to Sunday.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if you gotta fall in the way at your church, you don't have no income coming in, you don't have no time pay.
So I just wanted to make y'all aware that I've been getting a lot of calls.
Was outrageous.
I couldn't believe what some of those numbers were when I went back through that graph.
That was, I, I don't know how we come to that number, but again, some of them was ridiculous. I'm talking about a, a small church.
Yeah.
And it was thousands.
Yeah.
It wasn't a hundred, it was thousands.
No, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Are we too late?
How we got to that.
Trim's been sent out, are we too late to, to do that?
Well, we haven't said anything yet.
Yeah, we, we've just notified them.
Yeah, Trim sets a cap.
All that tells is what it could be up to, it could be, but doesn't say we.
So we still have time to, we still have time to do that?
Well, it'll be the next, it'll be September tenth, that you'll be making the decision.
Yeah, but I think that, I think, I, here's what I'm telling y'all, be prepared. I'm, I'm not, I hate that I'm not gonna be at that meeting, but be prepared to have a packed house as it relates to that issue. And understand that as, as my opinion stands on this, I'm all about the phased-in approach. And I, and I do think, though, that to your final point, Commissioner Wills, we need to look at, how did we arrive at some of those figures? For a place that generates nothing? And is, and is really, in the grand scheme of things, it's this much of a burden on our services?
Exactly.
If anything, it's probably adding to society.
They already been, they've been getting them all along.
Great point. But you, you, it's just, I think we need to go back and make sure he wasn't one of the ones that gave them all of it, so hammer on him.
You know, the other thing is, uh, you know, there's several churches in the Port LaBelle area, and they're, if, if they're in Unit Four, they're getting taxed already.
Yeah.
And when we add this other burden on top of that, they're getting taxed twice.
Yes, sir.
So we just, we need to be, you know, we need to be mindful of that as well, when we're doing this, we're looking at this, because, I mean, we don't need to, we don't need to double tax them.
Wait, say it again now? If they live there.
In Unit Four, they have their own mosquito control.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And they, they provide that, but it is, it is a cost.
Right.
But those churches within that unit, there is several there for sure, I know. If they are already being taxed for mosquito control, they shouldn't be hit on their county bill as well.
We shouldn't have them within our boundaries of the MSBU for mosquito control if they're not being served.
Shane Parker, for the record, if they're not in the boundaries of mosquito control, they don't get assessed.
How do you divide the boundaries in Port LaBelle, Shane?
Well, there's, Port LaBelle's just a cluster. There's a Unit Four that's assessed by the HOA. There's some sections, uh.
Unit Two?
I'm not gonna go by units after Unit Four, because I can't remember, but Mr. Zorn, I don't know that Laurel.
Laurel Oaks.
Laurel Oaks, they don't have any assessment whatsoever, they have an HOA, but there's no mosquito control. You have isolated pockets like Castle and Terrace, Tanglewood Oaks, which you would be in, uh, Fur Mac subdivision, Country Oaks. We assess those folks for mosquito control. And then Port LaBelle CDD does the balance.
The Tanglewood Oaks is in Unit Four.
It's in Unit Four, but it's not assessed by.
So they are not assessed by PLCCD?
Henry County, yeah, not by PLCCD. Henry County assesses your tract, plus all those mobile homes for mosquito control.
Church up front is also in Unit Four, so obviously that's not, that's not taxed either. The big church on the, uh.
I'm assuming it's, it's.
Church of Ego Shepherd?
Yeah, Collins Wood and.
It's not, it's the one that's on, is that Eucalyptus makes the roundabout?
Eucalyptus or.
It's on Eucalyptus, right, just where you get to the store, it's a big church on the left there.
I believe.
Yes, we used to do the election stuff there.
Probably assessed.
Tommy, you remember?
Yeah, well, again, that, that means just stuff like that, we need to look.
But that's, yeah, well, I mean, we can check it out, but I just know that's, before, we never assessed nobody in Port LaBelle. And then we came before this board, and we added certain areas like Tanglewood Oaks subdivision, your parcel, um, Country Oaks. Because they had a HOA, but they didn't have any money, they couldn't do anything, and then these isolated pockets, because nobody was treating them.
Yeah, well, the most ridiculous thing I ever heard in my life, uh, we started this project to build the church. We started going out for construction loans, and I had so many people tell me point blank, we will not loan a church money. So that doesn't compute for me. He said, you won't pay your bills. That's what he told me, and I heard that, if I heard that once, I heard it a dozen times, kid you not. Over and over and over again, no, we won't finance that. Why not? You're a church. Yeah, we won't pay your bills. I've heard that.
Right.
That was the most ridiculous thing I've heard in my life, so, again, people will tell you quick, you know, they get tired of people standing there with their handout, but they're not willing to pay their, not willing to pay their way.
Just two more comments, one for Mark and then one for the board, because you mentioned it. The parcels that were higher amounts, you need to look at and see if they had a parsonage and a commercial building. So if you had a parsonage, you had a home, they get charged rec, they get charged other items, and then just a church itself has its fee. And then the other thing, Mark, they didn't mention, which I think should forget, is the, if they do not pay the assessment, and you make it all uniform, doesn't Ad Valorem kick in the difference?
Yeah, the way this is supposed to be done is, you know, uh, if you, if anybody is given an exemption by the board from paying MSBU's, um, the board is supposed to make up the balance through Ad Valorem money, now, that's something we've not done over the years.
So we gotta make it whole.
We're supposed to make it whole, because somebody's paying.
Somebody's gotta pay and the service is being rendered.
Everybody else who's paying, if somebody gets a break, and so.
So by, by, by the board, the previous board decreeing, we're gonna give exemptions to some people? And we're not gonna worry about paying it, we're just gonna find it out? Yeah.
That's a, that's a tough conundrum. Now you're asking.
That's one way of putting it.
Yeah, that's, uh, uh, by, by, by giving them a, a, a phased rate or anything, then we're letting the rest of the residents of the county pay for that service form.
Uh, can't argue that. You, you, you can debate that one until the cows come home, but the fact of the matter is, is that's exactly what it is. So it's gonna be, I mean, I just think it's a, I guess the positive way of saying it is, I'm glad that we discovered it. I'm embarrassed that it's happened the way it's happened. I hope that we're able to find common ground, and we're not, we're not gonna create too many frustration points and enemies in, in this.
Yeah.
Well, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna close doors on churches.
No, sir.
We don't wanna do that.
No, Grandma.
If we can, if we can, if we need to, you know, ration it out in different areas, and we need to do it that way, I, there, there is some churches, and you know, here, the worst part is, the little church that has a little bitty parsonage and, and they're getting charged for the parsonage, and the commercial building, too, they're barely getting by.
They're getting hammered the hardest.
And they're getting hit the hardest.
Yep.
You know, the bigger churches, it's, it's not that big a hit. But you take the little one that's, oh, just because they have a little bitty house there and a, and a building. I mean, that's, I don't know, it's, it's hard, that, that part's hard for me, because, I mean, I'm, I'm on both sides of this, I see it. And I see the smaller churches, and they struggle, but they're doing a great thing for the community.
Like you say, most of them go week to week.
They do, they really do. So I, I believe, Commissioner Turner, I believe you're on a, on a hot trail here, we need to figure out a way to, to break this down. And, and, you know what, let's don't close the doors, let's help them keep them open.
Yeah, I agree.
Pay your part, but let's keep your doors open.
And Mr. Chair, I think this is one of those ones that, you know, I think, I think we need to look at it from a, from a macro perspective as well. Of, of what, what does that look like to all of the entities that, the ones that are being charged and have been paying it? Versus the ones that haven't? How does that all play out? What does it look like from a bottom-line perspective? And, and then where do we find the, the landing spot on that?
I think that's a good idea, though.
Ms. Mark, can you resend that back out to us, please? The data from the, uh, churches?
That's Tommy.
Tommy, can you resend that back out?
Yes, ma'am, the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Yes.
And some of them are gonna blow your mind.
Well, I saw it, um, hm. I didn't, I just didn't realize until they brought it out.
It popped out in red, boy, it jumped at you. I mean, it was, it was impressive.
That's a thought, on the parsonage issue, I know that sounds sympathetic, but a parsonage is a house. And there's houses everywhere, owned by a lot of poor people throughout the county. And they don't pay property taxes if they're below the twenty-five thousand, but they pay their assessment. They have to pay their solid waste, they have to pay their recreation, they have to pay their fire, all, mosquito, they pay all of that, no matter how poor they are.
And Mark, to that point, I would love to, I would love to see what that percentage is, you know, of success versus failure rate. I'd like to see that, you know?
Meaning, the folks who don't pay property taxes?
Essentially default.
Their only bill is assessments, and they don't pay that?
Yes, sir. Not, not by, not by, uh, they're being invasive or we've missed it.
Yeah.
They're just incapable, you know? I'd love to see what that, what that percentage there is.
Mr. Papinoff, you have something for us?
I have a follow-up question, too, at the end of, for, for finish room, Commissioner.
Very simply, I just need, um.
Thank you, Ms. Papinoff.
You to approve the members to the community assistance task force, our CDBG grants.
Moved to approve.
And our first project.
Janet Papinoff, Grants Director. Our first project is Four Corners, because it is the only shovel-ready project, and it's, the grant is due on Friday. This is our last step before we submit, is to appoint this committee. Took us a while to put a committee together. I figured everybody would just jump on board, but it didn't happen that way.
Is this part of the grant?
Yes.
One of the grant?
Yes.
Part of the RFA? I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on it? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? You said you had another, something else.[1563.38]